Well, wait a minute for the boss to show up. Now let's go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Bob, you got the floor?
Football lighting, hauling some gravel, hours. Going along. Close to school, starting back up, so been trying to get some school bus routes. We'll try and get some more before the buses start running. This is fall project. That's it.
Done, Eric.
Getting really, really close with this scale. Just got a huge little tiny issue, so hopefully in the back of today we can get that wrapped up. Hopefully start moving on with that project. I had the football team up on Friday, get a bunch of water picking. Other than that, just plugging along.
Is that all you got, Nick?
Attention permits, enforcement issues. We've left out so far on fires in Beaverhead County, but as you probably have seen Beaverhead or Madison County not so much. It was older, hopefully it stays that same way. That's all I got.
Hey, Jack?
I'm up for my eyeballs in fair and nitrate tests, but that's about all I got going on.
Hey, Justin?
Final push before fair. Lots of objects happening this week. I've got D.C. exhumation in there right now. Leveling my arena out. Plumborship decedent this week. Yeah, just final push before fair.
Hey, Sean?
Um, well, hello everyone. It's a big mess outside. We got Brian Long, he's gonna come in on Wednesday and tear up some of the concrete up to the front door with the sheriff's assignment. We're gonna have it closed down between eight and five for the demo of that and on Wednesday, because he'll prep it and get it ready. And then Thursday, he's gonna lay part of the concrete or half of it, so it'll be shut down between eight and five. Public can walk on it after five. And then later in the following week, we'll tear out the rest of the concrete for the sidewalk and get that fixed in. And then we're getting, we have to get ahold of Mike at West Electric, so they can do their wiring for the generator. And then my crew, we're going to dig up our spr- around our sprinkler lines and expose those and try to expose fiber optic cable. So when the propane West Alliance comes in and digs their trench, they won't hit the sprinklers or the fiber optic cable. When they do the trench for the propane line, so then, once we get that set up, we can set up with the pad and then hopefully start getting the generator hook up out there.
Yes, if they hit the fiber optic cable, is it their problem or our problem?
So we are digging, so that's the people from West, the propane alliance or however they, I can't remember the name exactly. They don't wanna dig up where the fiber optic cable is, so they asked if we could. So we're gonna very carefully dig it up and try to expose it, so that they can dig the trench and then stop where it's exposed, so we're not ruining it. So we're just gonna be very careful not to get the fiber optic cable. So there's that, and then hopefully we can get on with all that being done. Hopefully in the next few weeks, we can get ready with the next step. We ended up last week, we did fix a lot of sprinkler lines that were broke from when they dug up from Northwest Energy when they did that. So we fixed a bunch of those. We also, um, we had the combo unit in the jail. We had to re- tear that off. That took an entire day to refix the seal on that. So we were down in the jail with that for a little bit, and I mean, we did have the showers come in that we had ordered three months ago, but there was an issue with measurements, so we now have to figure out why they're twice bigger than what they were customized supposed to be made. So we're trying to find out more on that information and find out where the mess-up was on that. So we're off probably another three months before we can get a new shower in it in the jail, so on that is, is you busy?
Hey, Stacy?
Got the ballot proof for the general election, just working on those and as soon as those get approved, can send off to the printer.
George?
Tom and I and Commissioner Jackson were at the Jackson Water Sewer meeting and team that too last week. Basically, we're trying to coach them through Water Wars 2025 and get them up to a more formal procedure on water and sewer hookup, so that there's actually documentation and not just word of mouth, because we need that things in writing now going forward. And so we're working on kind of helping out that every day as we, I got a call from Wade over the weekend too. So it's kind of ongoing. And then today, let's see, I gotta go out to Centennial Ranch later today, because they have a commercial kitchen that the hunting outfitters use. Need to get that done, because they're gonna get real busy here in the near future. And I'm gonna help Tom with some deceptive permits today, get some of those out the door, so pretty much that.
Uh, like Troy said, we were out at Jackson, helping them out, not only with the water, but with the RV park that Jackson House Springs has set up on their own. Helping them navigate that. And you guys are gonna have a floodplain violation come before you next Monday, so I will have a report out on that, so you're familiar with what's about to happen.
Schools?
We had our fall orientation for the teachers this last Thursday, and the two new ones, one at Polaris and one at Wise River, who wasn't at the meeting last year, he joined it faculty in January. That went well, the university was very nice to us up there. This week it's pretty quiet, there are a couple of school board meetings. I'm not sure I've been with ten to either one of them. And then on Thursday, I'll be on the radio to talk about the homeschooling regulations. It's time for those folks to think about notifying the county superintendent that they're gonna homeschool their kids. And we'll try and get the word out, it's gonna be in the Tribune, it's gonna be on Southwest Montana News, the Dillonite Daily. Get them with the ra- on the radio. I don't know what else I can do. Get me on TV, but then I'd have to clean up, that's just not gonna happen. Schools start, uh, Wisdom School's gonna start early, but after that, everybody's gonna start after Labor Day. And the schools here in town, Beaverhead County High School and Dillonell Elementary, they have their budgets and they have some items to meet, and I think we are set for the Monday after September 2nd. I'm hoping everything will be in by then.
How many of the schools, you've got your budgets in, or you?
Just those two.
High school and?
And Dillon Elementary. They, uh, John signed the Dillon Elementary forms last week, and the rest of them should be coming then this week. The Riley School indicated they're done. The only one I haven't heard from is Wise River. That's the end of the schools.
President?
Not much new, just a lot of problems. My office is a mess, I need to clean it up and computers, phones, that seems to be ongoing all the time, so that's all I got really.
Anybody else? Anything else?
Tom from the Knockdown, he's got a fire in Black Hill.
That's what I was gonna say, I heard there was one of the black, it's not so major.
Yeah.
I came to town yesterday to get a couple items, you know, at home, I went through a rainstorm in the grasshopper that was unbelievable. I don't think I've ever seen it rain like that. I think it was pretty short, and the lightning was everywhere yesterday afternoon.
What was the thing you went through, my lord?
Yeah, I mean, the lightning was, yeah, almost constant going through there. All right, you guys?
He said they got a half inch in Dillon too yesterday.
Is that right?
They had a little raindrops, it was a half inch apart.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, it came down, I've been through a lot of rains and I've spent some time in southeast things where no one's been raining. That storm that hit there in the grasshopper yesterday, I'm sure they'd love to have that when they were trying to irrigate. It did dump some water in a hurry, now I'm not hitting it, I mean, the highway was like a river. All right, have a good week, you guys. That looked like it was, we didn't get dropped at home.
All right, next item on discussion, solid waste rate increase. Yeah, it's always me. Are you against the rule?
There's.
There's, but I mean, there is.
I think Jane just wanted to know about the commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but Jane, that's what's easier to find next time. It'll be raised to one hundred and ten.
You raised it to one hundred and ten?
Yeah.
The board. Good.
One ten.
Correct?
Yeah.
I thought the minutes say I wasn't there.
That's what it was.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
And if you put that in form of a resolution, is that easier to keep track of, do you think, or just in the minutes?
I think in the minutes is fine. I just, the last time that.
Resolution would hurt.
It wouldn't.
No. At least it's all at once.
It would double out.
So you want to do that now?
Oh, we got to.
You got to post.
You got to go post resolution next week.
Okay, all right.
Don't make a resolution and not send it next week.
Yep. Yeah. I'm the old one, copycat.
Didn't wait for the screaming.
I don't know if you know what was resolution.
No.
It was just in the meeting.
I think it, that was why it was so hard to find because it's only in the solid waste.
Well, but it really wasn't in the solid waste minutes. It was like in the whole commission.
No, I think it was in the solid waste minutes, but it was before they were digital, so we had to like find them, find them. Yeah.
That's.
Which now it's in multiple places and it's not so hard.
Well, it's one ten. I wouldn't matter with one ten, but probably still not the lowest round.
Well, it hasn't been raised in years.
Two thousand eight.
Yep. And nothing's going up, cause.
Well, everything's with the hell.
Nothing's going up.
Yeah, because what was it? Compendiums were four to five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, eight hundred.
Yeah. Well, I mean, previously.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just about nothing.
Yeah, now they're doubled.
Yep.
That it?
That's it.
Great.
Invested? Yeah.
Yeah. Bell run. Bye.
See ya.
Hi, next time on the Pageant. Question and answer, question or answer, work for good or evil, travel planning management. Travel management?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, Emily, you can read this letter if you want to. It says, uh... Hello, good morning.
So I'm, I'm Bia Erin.
Okay.
I'm co-chairing the group, so I, I can expand and answer.
You want to explain?
Sure. Yeah, it's a good time, yeah?
Yep.
So, okay, I'm Bia Erin, I'm co-chair of the Beaverhead Deer Lodge Working Group. Commissioner Rice is a member of our group. Commissioner McGinley was an active member or maybe former, but active participant or maybe former member. If you don't know about our group, I'll give you a, a little, little info. Our group comes together to talk about forest management on the Beaverhead Deer Lodge National Forest. We share concerns, input, ideas, what we think about projects going on in the forest, what should be happening, what shouldn't be happening, what are the impacts to our communities and stakeholders, and we share that with the forest, aiming to improve their decisions and their activities, considering impacts to everyone else, all users, everyone in our communities. We have another member of county commissioners as members, including Commissioner Rice for Beaverhead. We've got Jefferson, Powell, Madison, Pete Silverball. We have, uh, members, so I represent Quiet Recreation. I also serve on Jefferson County's parks, transient recreation commission. My co-chair, Sean Steinbach, who you might know, represents timber interests. We've got motorized representation, hunting, and conservation, citizen members. Other people who aren't members include DNRC. We have field representatives from our Montana senators and representatives. We really have robust conversation. We try to cover the board of concerns. And then we have forest leadership who also sits at our table, listens to us, gives us information. It's really in a spirit of partnership, trying to come up with best actions on the forest. That's what we do as a collaborative group. One of the priorities we've had for a really long time, and Commissioner Rice has been present for this, is travel management on the forest. To try and give you a bit of a summary of what travel management is, it's essentially travel planning on the forest. What roads are open, what roads are closed, what, what vehicles or what mode of travel can you use, when can you use them? The public, no matter how they use the forest, needs to know this. I know regulation isn't everyone's favorite thing, but some kind of understanding of appropriate access to the forest is needed for public use. In 2005, there was a federal mandate for all forests to complete this travel planning. That was 20 years ago, 2025 now. The Beaverhead Deer Lodge Forest has no travel plan, has been unable to complete this. They've tried many times. We've supported them for a long time. Workforce shortfalls, staffing shortfalls, leadership turning over every couple of years. They've just had a hard time getting traction, even though they made it a priority. Our group as a collaborative, representing broad spectrum of public citizens, say, we know this is a priority for you, forest. It's also a priority for all of us across the board. We want to help you move this forward because it impacts all of us. Right now, the forest is strapped. They have had their workforce cut again, as we all know. They've had funding cut again. They don't have the staff in place to complete this. They have been given other federal priorities like timber to focus on. So this travel planning is again falling down the list. Our group wants to ensure that it remains a priority and emphasize, despite federal priorities, those of us who live here want you to understand that this, where we live here on the ground, is important. We need, we need an established system of access to our forest, and we need to be able to understand that. We have heard from our congressional representatives that sit at our table. To really move this forward right now, what you should try to do is get county support. What our senators and representatives listen to is county voice. Counties have a lot of sway. So, we have written this letter, asking for the appropriate staffing, funding, and authorization to move this forward. We are approaching all seven counties that join the forest, asking for support in this request. And I'm going to tell you now, that was a bit of a background. Travel management is such a confusing thing. I just wanted to lay out what it is, why it's important. There's a number of reasons. Public safety, I'm going to start with. Like I said, I know not everyone loves regulation. No one wants to be told exactly what they can and can't do. This request is not about saying this is open or this is closed right now. That comes later. That is for everyone to get together and talk about. What this request is saying is, we just need to get to that conversation. We need to be able to follow through with this. We need staffing and money to get everyone at the table and move forward. With no regulation, with no oversight, it's becoming a free-for-all. There is no appropriate map, there's no appropriate understanding of what is open and what is not. There's confusion, there's user conflict, there's increasing injury, there's increasing recreational pressure, especially at hot spots. Law enforcement, because there's no established regulation and no established map, law enforcement has no backing to really issue citations. People know that. They are coming to this forest, and they are kind of doing whatever they want. It's becoming a public safety issue, especially in Jefferson County, and it's spreading out across the forest. It's tapping our first responders, it's tapping our local law enforcement. It's impacting our communities. Locals know it's a public safety issue, and they have stopped using their favorite routes. That's an issue for our communities. As far as economic importance, national priority is to increase timber by 25%, as President Trump has, has requested by executive order. We have heard from our timber interests, that's going to be hard to do if you don't have a system of regular use and an understanding of how to use them. As far as local economies, recreation is huge. One of the, one of the biggest contributors to Montana's economy and certainly to our local economies. Unmanaged recreation, I know we all talk about wildfire, we talk about thinning our forests. Jefferson County accepted that. I'm, I happen to be their representative. Madison County accepted that, Bute Silver Bowl accepted that.
Just real quick on that point, I want to make a point about...
Sure.
Crystal clear.
Yeah.
The Forest Service is required to invite counties, but it's not working that way. We begged the Forest Service for us to be cooperating agencies on this thing. So it's not that they're coming to us and asking. We've been fighting to get them on there for every time when you talk about leadership changing up here. The new leaderships up here do not understand what cooperating agency has been.
Well, that underscores my point in that
I know.
Counties have a vested interest, and you have critical knowledge that they need on local, your growth policies, your, all these impacts I've talked about. They need to hear it from you. Also, you've put time and resources into talking with your road department, your GIS department, your planning department, hiring a contracted individual. I know because I've been through that with Jefferson County too. And I know counties are chomping at the bit to be able to say their piece. That's a legal contract under NEPA. Ignore, not ignoring, delaying this federally mandated project and putting counties on hold for 20 years is, is distasteful to counties, but it also invites litigation. And if the forest gets sued on this, believe me, nothing on the forest that you, that Beaverhead County wants done is going to move. And, and the, the threat is hanging because this project has been delayed. Resource damage, wildlife connectivity. Beaverhead Deer Lodge is a critical piece of public lands that connects all sorts of habitats for all sorts of species. There's a lot of conservation interest in keeping erosion, keeping undue erosion in check from use that's not appropriate. Really the over, really what travel management about, is about to me is, and to our group, our working group, is access. It's not, it's not necessarily a recreation issue or a motorized issue. Everyone who uses the forest needs to use the roads and trails. If you want to set foot in the forest, you need to understand how you're legally and appropriately permitted to do that. Whether you're a grazing permittee, you're cutting wood, you're on a ATV, a mountain bike, a horse, you're RVing, you're, you're sitting and meditating, it doesn't matter. You need to know what rules you can use. Even if you never set foot on the forest. Because of the public safety and economic impacts, it affects everyone who lives in your community, every interest. I think I've covered most of my points, but basically what this letter is doing is underscoring the priority, why it's important to local communities, requesting the appropriate staffing, funding, and authorization to be able to move forward with this. We're, the forest has made it a priority, they're just unable to do it. We have been, it's been suggested to us by our field reps, congressional field reps, go above the forest, go to the senators, go to the forest chief. Tell them why locally this is important. Tell them our collaborative group has the established relationships, understanding, knowledge, drive, innovation. All we need is authorization and resources in the hands of the forest to do it. We will be there right beside them, bridging any gaps, figuring out any solution, picking up pieces, helping them out. Not saying this is open, this is closed, just enabling them to get to the table so that everyone can be there and start having those conversations so we can address all these impacts. We are hoping counties will support this letter, but there's seven counties adjoining that we're approaching. We're hoping we can list your county as a name in support of our request.
Oh, that letter, I got the email, August 15th. And down here, it said you come Duke, Bute, Madison County, and Colback, the game warden.
Yeah.
A year back from them.
Duke, I did. Joe, I have not, Joe Campick, the game warden, I have not, but he has been so boldly driving this in the past.
That's what I thought.
There, I, he gave previous feedback, I incorporated his feedback. He just probably hasn't read his email. I can give him a call if you really want that, okay? But, but everybody else on list, on the list, including your contracted representative, Carrie White, has approved this letter.
Did Duke?
Duke did, yep, yep. He sent me an email on Friday.
How long you been on the collaborative up there, working for that?
Personally, I've been on there since 2022. I've been co-chair for a year and a half.
She was, that, Colback is Powell County, Granite County, Silver Bowl, game warden, correct?
Uh, Campick, yeah, yeah, Anaconda area.
And Campick, you're obvious, that's what I thought.
Yes, and he has, between travel management and law enforcement, which really go hand in hand, and we've really been pushing for appropriate law enforcement stuff into Campick, Joe Campick, the game, the game warden for the Anaconda area. I know, I know impacts in Jefferson County are heavy. He has affirmed and brought forward that impacts in, on the Pittler District in the Anaconda, Phillipsburg Deer Lodge area are equally as concerning in terms of public safety, inability to issue citations, activity running rampant and destroying the landscape. He's been one of the primary voices.
This, this area indicates that there's 12, so yes. And there's 10 here and two there, so that's 12.
So if you, maybe, so I'm not included there, so we have 13 altogether.
13, that's.
And you can assume my approval there.
Who else, anybody else besides us?
Those are all our official members.
No, these are all.
And so those are all our voting members. But we do have an equal number of people at the table, including, like I said, DNRC, congressional representatives, who have all...
Their technical advice.
Technical advisors, and they've all contributed and supported and even introduced this avenue of, of strategy to secure that support.
Yeah, myself, you know, I, I agree with what you say. You know, the big thing is you send this on and then you, whether it gets tied up on desks or it makes it through with all the changes, who knows?
Well, that's...
This is the vehicle that's going to be helping out.
I, I hope so, Tom. That's, as you know, at our last meeting, we had, we had a virtual conversation with DC representatives who deal with the forest. We spoke with them for half an hour. So representatives for Senator Sheehy, Gaines, and Representative Zinke were online with us. Was it last week? We spoke about travel management with them for about half an hour. We have their ear, they're taking notes, they're asking questions. This is now, so Congress is on August recess. We've been advised to get this to them by the end of August if possible, so that they can make appropriations requests come September. We have their ear. This is to help ensure that they don't get distracted by other things. Our collaborative group, it's our priority. We are following up. This letter will be copied to the forest chief, Tom Schultz. We're not, this isn't, uh, send it off and, and see what happens. We, we have those representatives at our table every month, and we all end up with them.
They're all up here.
Yep.
On my end, may I make a few comments on there too? I do not disagree that this for, through this travel management needs to be done. I don't think anybody's been harder on the Forest Service to get this done than Beaverhead County. I mean, it was done in 2008 until they pulled back. Every supervisor we've had in there has made that their priority. Right up to Al Watson talking about getting it done again, and then he left real quick. Llewellyn's now, we don't even have a forest supervisor. But we've been pushing this because of the federal mandate really hard and really, and it's been, the Forest Service, when they were staffed and had money, their priority was not this. So now, when the legislature, the leadership of Forest Services changed, and they put new priorities on trying to get forests off that secure rural system and back to managing the forest on logs and stuff, and laid back, we all know the Forest Service got cut way back on staff. But now, when they're getting cut back on staff, is now it's going to be our priority? Asking to do full funding and full staffing? Would we, I guess, as a thing, is, is been on board of trying to get some of this stuff under control and prioritize? Back at NACO is the big push on this. And if we're going to send the letter to the representatives, it needs to be stated in here, our priority. I think our priority in Beaverhead County has been, we've been on the thing forever, on this thing called secure rural school funding, that they haven't done yet. That needs to be done way before this. And I think that needs to be said in this thing, because if we're asking for full funding, and Zinke, or Sheehy, or Gaines calls back, all right, we only got to do which one? Which one are you going to do? This new letter you just wrote, that all these guys want to do it? Or your secure rural school funding? Those are the kind of comments I think of doing these letters on, it's just, uh, the Forest Service has missed their boat for a long time. And I think the new chief on this travel management, because it's, no, it's been done, it's not been able to work through the Forest Service, is going to get the counties the authority to go do their travel management and turn it into the Forest Service to be signed off on. I think that's the priority we ought to be taking on this letter right now, is, because you know that ours is done. Ours was turned into the Forest Service, and it, and it was that little scenario where they had all the GIS problems that they got out of a contract around Portman that would not match on there and had all those little roads codes. And that's when it's dropped off. I've explained, we have to every one of the supervisors that's came in here on that piece of it, as soon as you show them what the Forest Service has been doing, their funding goes somewhere else. The Pampers in particular, and we've never agreed with the Pampers of doing travel management by a project at a time. I've, I've never disagreed with that because that's what we're doing. But the Pampers, we did, because there was some logging and stuff they needed done on the Pampers. Doesn't face, affect Beaverhead County a lot, except for travel management part. We signed off on that to do travel management on the Pampers. And they were going to do all this encroachment work, logging work. Everything was going on fine until the logging started up there and they got sued, knocked down in logging. So once again, the legal mandate of it is when you get these collaborative groups going together, we can do our part, and then all of a sudden, when the effective part comes and do an actual management up there, the Forest Service gets sued on the logging project and it stops. Everything else got done. So that is one of the cases on travel management. I'm going to sign this letter. I want a paragraph in there first that, we agree that it's important to get travel management done. Prioritize it, but I, I don't think we ought to be putting on here for full funding and appropriate staff items when, when the new management of this is, is, is just changed the structure of how the Forest Service is going to be doing, in my opinion. And that's the only reason I said that a little bit earlier, is every time we get a request for funding from the federal government, we've been in favor of, of getting that hammered back. So I just don't want to be a hypocritical in that part. Travel management's a sore part on our part. We've had it done, we've begged the Forest Service to get it done. I've been to those meetings of the collaborative when, when they've been trying to talk to the, of the new level. And every commitment to Beaverhead County's done, we've invested in it, we've been at the table, and we can't get the Forest Service over the hump. So here, when we finally got a chance to get it done on county level and get it signed by the Forest Service, I think that's a driver, I think that's advantageous the way we're going. And it's probably happened because they're understaffed. I'll get on myself, but thank you, yeah?
No, that's, I, all your points are right on. I, I get them, we've talked about them. I want to address a few things. So our request here is for an appropriately staffed team capable of performing the analysis and implementation required and authorization. Staffing, funding, and authorization. Appropriate is really, it's not, we're not saying over, we're saying appropriate. What we mean is, by whatever pathway they can get it done, if you provide them the, if, if you provide the forest the authorization and the appropriate resources, our collaborative can help see it through. In terms of the secure rural schools, I know that's an issue. I know there's a finite amount of money. And I might be wrong here, I'm just wondering, we are asking for money to go to the Forest Service to follow through with this. Secure rural fundings, I believe, would go to counties. It's related, but it might be a separate request. However, if you feel you need wording about that in this letter to be able to sign onto it, we can work with you on that and try and, try and get that right, if, if it's something we need to say. If there's, if there's additions or edits, we are happy to accommodate that and, and get it back to you. But what I want to stress is, however this is able to move forward with, oh, oh, also that, yes, yes, we're asking them for the appropriate resources at a time when their resources are short. You may feel it's a disadvantageous time to ask when they're already strapped. We feel it's a, it's a window of chaos. They are disorganized, we are saying, hey, here we are. Use us, our collaborative group, we can make it happen. You put the resources on the table, on the Forest Service table, we are going to help make that happen. I feel secure rural schools is related but separate. I don't know if it's, has a place in this direct request, but as I said, if you feel differently, we might be able to work with you on that.
What was the name of the forest supervisor up there before Watson, the lady?
Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa, Timbuktu.
Timbuktu.
That's when we got Carrie hired back on, is her thing. Because they came with a new staff, they showed up at the club with them a couple of times.
Yeah.
Katie, I gotta remember her name is.
Oh, Megan Dawson, maybe?
Dawson, yeah. Here it is, that's, that's where this whole thing come. They were, at once, finally, after 18 years, funded to do travel management and had staffing to do it.
So Megan is still there?
I know.
And the forest still wants it? They just need all those other special people?
Oh, the leaders change.
I know, we've been begging for that the whole, the whole time of this. That's why I'm, I'm really hard fresh right this time, is to, is to beg the Forest Service for more, more funding. I'm, I'm a full supporter of this, and this letter here can do is if we put that first paragraph together, I am not against, uh, for the, to authorize a timely completion of this travel management. The timely is probably a little bit, probably over two decades old. That, that's an embarrassment. But then, with the full funding of, of appropriate staffing and full funding, get those words out, and those are high, them are high words to be doing.
So the thing is...
And then when Mr. Hartz comes in here and asks for the same thing, I mean, everybody keeps asking for this, to ask for congressman for the full funding.
But the thing is, that's what it needs. We have, we have spoken to the field representatives for our, for our senators. They have asked us last Wednesday on screen, we hear you, we get this. What do you need? What does the forest need?
That's what I did.
And what the forest needs is staffing and the, and the funding. I mean, that's, that's, that's the gap, that's the pinch point. That's what we need. The, the congressional reps say, we, we are ready to take this up, we need your specific request. And the forest's specific request is staffing and funding and authorization. So I, it would be, it would lose effectiveness, I feel, to remove that.
I can't say this is a hundred percent sure of you, but the chief has been talking about trying to get this thing done right back to the local level. What if, this letter said, congressman, is to allow the counties, in their individual counties, to do travel management and get it to the Forest Service?
I would, I think we're open to something like that, but I would word it a little more openly in, in a way that, I think we addressed it close to the end, saying that our collaborative is poised with assets to drive action, innovate solution, bridge gaps, and ensure success. We can be a little more specific and say as, by, by any path or means. I think it's hard to specify a path because there's so much uncertainty right now, but it's, it's possible we could make it clearer that whatever way this can happen, if you give authorization and resources, we will take that path. give authorization and resources, we will take that path. If, if there's still some reluctance, I can work with you to insert wording that clarifies your, your-
Well, you've heard what I might concern is about the Forest Service, and they're in, in building to do anything for twenty years. And, and it, I know it sounds a little harsh. We can work with the, the Rangers have been great here, but the, uh, and every time you go to the big level of that cooperating agency book we got, and Vicki Christensen was the chief, NACO worked with them at that level, is to get this thing done so counties can work. I, I go to the NACO meetings, and they talk about this. But that mid-level stuff, which is where a lot of the staffing is getting lost at, has been terribly ineffective for Beaverhead County, and mostly Montana. Like I told you, that everybody talks about these relationships, and we have tried and tried and tried your relationship with our Forest Supervisors. But I've been here way too long, but I think we're up to eighteen of them in my career. And every one of them is what makes me so mad. Every one of them has promised to get this thing done, and every one of them has come up with a different reason why. Now, now, in this short eight months of this new year, the Forest Service is trying to change directions, to get stuff done. Their mandate is to get back into the forest and get these logs got. Right, wrong, or different, whether I agree with that or not, but that's their priority. It took it off of this other stuff that they'd been funded for before, never could get it done. So I am a little reluctant right now to be able to say, let's do it back to the way they've been doing it, when there's a possibility we can get this other way. The, the, this travel management needs to be, uh, for the tough stuff she talks about, your game words and stuff. Nobody knows what to do. But we have, probably within thirty days, our travel management's done. All we need is the Forest Service to sign off on. And it's been through that whole process of that thing. So that's why I'm a little reluctant to do full funding, more staff, and that's, that's all I'm saying on this.
She doesn't say full funding.
Yes, she does.
No, she said adequate.
Appropriate, appropriate staffed team.
To fund and authorize this, to full funding the twenty-six appropriations for appropriately staffed stuff, blah, blah, blah. Full funding and authorization. This is the letter you sit down. I mean, it's-
Well, that's what we, I, but there is. Where, where's that?
I've, I've got, I've got to fund and authorize, I've got appropriately staffed team, I've got secure staffing, funding, and authorization.
Apparently fourteen.
Yeah, it, it looks like the same one. Am I, I'm, maybe I'm missing something?
Our request, we urge you to include full funding in the FY twenty-six appropriation for an appropriately staffed team capable of performing this, blah, 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 blah.
Oh, full funding, I see.
Full funding and authorization will support. Any, any is, it's just one of those things that I think, right at this time, travel management needs to be done. We've got him on staff to do it. When I heard that stuff, that we can do our own, it's the first time now in twenty years since this thing come up, that it might actually get done.
If we struck out full funding and just left it at appropriate staffing, would you be?
This is me. I mean, you guys, I don't know, I mean, that's, I think, anything, you know, there's, there's, we sat alone here in this whole group with the, with the disagreeing, I know, after seven twelve meetings. You know, that, that's why I decided that, you know, they asked me to sign, I said I'd better bring it here. And so that, uh- Madison County's travel management's done.
Yeah.
They signed it off.
The, the Madison District of the Forest.
For Madison.
But, but they're still engaged as cooperating agencies, so they must have some unresolved issues as well.
But they wanted to stay apart, so they're blending with the whole forest.
As I said, so, so maybe my suggestion is, um, consider it as is. If there's some reluctance, we, we may be able to work with wording. Uh, like I said, if I, if I adjusted full funding and made it more appropriate staffing, or leave it as is and sign and, and support it, but I wonder if it's an opportunity for Beaverhead County to send a complimentary letter stating your specific concerns, saying, saying, we support this because we want travel management done. These are also specifically what we, what we want to push about travel management. I really think this is a window, I know you say the priorities are on timber. We have highlighted here that in order to focus on that national priority, you need a regulated road system on this forest. That's our number two point on why it matters. I really think this is an opportunity in chaos to speak out loud and insistently, saying, here we are with something that's important, and we can make it happen, if you look our way and authorize it. That's basically what this letter is saying. If there's a word or two you don't like, we can-
I forget which representative on there commented too, without the travel management plan, the RYS, and the Lunt Mountains, and the different logging ones they mentioned, I can't remember the names now. But they, they run shy, shy away from ones that don't have one of these in effect, so that when they-
Yes.
Bid on a timber job, they bid higher, because they're worried about the-
Yeah.
Regulations being insufficient.
The, the timber, the local timber companies, yes, saying they avoid the plans that don't have the travel management, ties into our, our point that it, it supports the national priority. It's actually required. It's actually, if, if that national priority is to happen on this forest, our timber interests are saying, we need this plan in place.
And then that, that Danes one said, with this in place, it avoids that litigation.
Litigation.
Litigation. Because of, um, Pemper, that, where, Ron Pemper, that Powell had doing, they sued him on that because they didn't have a leave when they walked in.
No, we signed off on the Pemper, uh, travel management.
Yeah, I know, but it was, uh, whatever.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
Say we're doing, uh, project by project, and that's how the Forest at that time kept saying, that's how they could get it done in Beaverhead. Every time we have a project, let's try to do one.
I think if, if going, if going district by district, or landscape by landscape is a viable way, I think this letter still supports that. It's just saying, just, just ensure the Forest has the appropriate resources, we will help them move it forward from there in whatever way makes most sense.
Oh, myself, I would sign on to this, the only party one, I guess you'd say, on to this, and then we'd write a similar support letter for secure rural schools, because this doesn't even go together with that. I think that's two separately parts.
I think they're related in terms of public lands funding, but, but the funding is going to different places, possibly from different, I think this is a specific request.
This is logging and natural resource, and that's over here in a different pot. Myself.
That's my feeling as well. But, but I, I think it would benefit all parties if Beaverhead County were to emphasize the related secure rural schools in a complimentary request.
Yeah, because secure rural schools is a huge deal for us, Powell, and all that.
Generally.
Like Dan Sager said, that comes later, after this, because it's another, another battle.
I feel like it's another battle alongside, but I'd say-
That's when, the secure rural schools, how you win that gradually, as you drag the kids into it, it's for the kids.
Sure, sure.
That's how that gets beat, according to Sager and these other ones that get SRS money. It's, every time it comes to be renewed, there's a to-do, in my twenty-year history. No, that's, you know, as far as, well, I just said, I, I would be the one on the S side to be the, because we'd be the only one to know in this whole group. That'd be thirteen, fifteen.
Well, what we're hoping-
This would be sixteen as a group.
What we're hoping is, we have at the bottom of our letter, our thirteen members listed here, we're hoping to list counties, uh, supporting counties here. So we'd have the names of all our members, and the, the names of, uh, the listed counties who support it. As I said, I, I feel this letter brings forward all your concerns and asks for appropriate resources, which is what the ask they are waiting to hear. The specific, the specific, the, the specific ask that they need is appropriate resources.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the thing that's going to bring it to the next level. If, if you still have reluctance, that holds up your approval, um, and you're open to some rewording, please, please consider that and let me know. But my feeling is that this, this letter addresses your county's needs, and is, represents the wording that is going to, this isn't the last of the conversation. As long as we get their attention with an openness to provide resources, then we can talk about how that's directed alongside the Forest Service. We just need to make sure they're looking at the gap and what's needed to fill it. That's what this letter is trying to do, just get us up to that next level, make sure they're looking at us, and then let us come in again with the specifics. I appreciate the time.
What do we want to do to proceed, guys?
What do you think?
I'd make a motion, we sign this one, and then draft up a separate SRS and that kind of thing, because that's, to me, they don't go together.
They, they're exactly together on Forest Service funding, they're the same. I mean, it's just, sure, different pots of wine, but if they only got so much authorized, if they put it here, they're not able to put it there.
That, but I, you know, you say that, but I remember Sager and Jeff Gunning, and I'll say that, all of those programs built, and SRS, they're a different catalyptics over here than what we're doing here. This is a check the box, do you have a travel plan? And the rest is arguing about the ratio of SRS over here.
So who's going to put this letter together for SRS?
Well, we got one, we've done it ever on that.
We could do that, we could do that. You know, you can draft that up here, experience with that, that.
This letter, like I said, I do not have one, just, other than cross out a few words in one sentence in here, and I'll sign this. The, we ask for your support uh, to authorize the timely completion of the travel management plan. Get rid of that word and fund. Those are the things right now that-
Are you open, are you open to that sort of change that you said you were?
I understand, I, I'm, I guess I'm, right now, I'll say, yes, I'm open. My hesitation is, when we spoke to representatives for the senators and, or, they, they wanted, they, they said, we can do this for you, we can move this forward. What do you need?
This whole letter-
The Forest needs-
This whole letter come out of all the congressional zones.
So the primary thing is workforce, the primary thing is staffing. I, I need staffing in there. I mean, with staffing comes funding, that's, that's, whether you say it or not, it, it involves money. But they, I saw them on the screen, they're writing notes, they stopped writing notes, they looked up, they said, tell us specifically what you need. Specifically what the Forest needs is workforce and the staffing, the appropriate funding to support that. Can I say workforce and the appropriate staffing to support that?
Funding workforce.
Fun, funding of appropriate workforce?
You don't have to say full funding, just funding.
I ain't going to, that's what I'm trying to say, because we're going to come here, month after month, people are going to start asking for funding, us write letters to the Congress. I think we need to prioritize some of this, and that's all I'm saying on that.
Yeah, this, this is strictly this group, and there's, we'd be the lone ranger.
I, I'm expecting support from all, of joint counties. It's, we heard from all of them that it's-
That's, that's why I said I'd possibly bring it here before I agree up there. But I, to me, this is kind of a standalone thing. You know, I agree with what you're saying, that it, you can't blend every topic into this. Secure rural schools is, is what it was, it infects the schools and the roads and all of that.
Drop that one sentence, and then both these words of funding in this thing, good letter. What we're asking, two different things, but, but-
What, you know what he means by that?
Yeah, um, so ask for your support to, that first paragraph, ask for your support to authorize the timely completion, if I took a fund out of there.
And I don't know, the Beaverhead County can write their own letter, family, and ours is-
Well, sure, again.
We dropped that next, that big sentence you have highlighted, that's the one that's just, you know, I agree, I agree, in the middle of it, I would agree to be a part of this, you know, but I, we got to have a separate letter. Beaverhead County letter over here, if you want to do that, I don't care.
But you know, this all could blow, blow away in the wind, but at least we made that.
So is there no use of the word funding that you would support in any way, like a, appropriate funding or supporting funding or something? I, I just, I feel like whether you say it or not, if you're asking for support, you're asking for money. If you're asking for staffing, you're asking for money, you might as well ask for the money.
Then you're pushing me completely away from writing this letter. Because I'll tell you, there's not been a bigger fight at the Forest Service for the last eighteen years, sitting in here and doing this stuff. Go back to Scott Marsh's time when we did this. This is what we've been begging for. And now, I think we have a chance of the Forest Service under a little bit of new management, whether it's right, wrong, or different, how they're doing it. I think they got a chance to get some of this stuff done.
That's what this whole group spoke of, we've got a chance now, if we want to-
To go back to the old way!
Just incentive to get it done. I don't care, they don't, they don't say they're going to go back to the old way. They never, not once in that meeting out there, they just want to proceed, they don't want it to drop off.
If I take out fund, can I say, secure the staffing support and authorization? Support the staffing, the appropriate staff team to perform analysis?
All I'm saying is, is if this is, if this is just me, then a two to one gets your letter done.
Gotcha.
There's two, two full funding, or two fundings, or full funding in here in one sentence. The last highlighted here would satisfy me, but it doesn't matter to me, because I, I've heard, like, said some of these letters is like sending, uh, sending notes to the tooth fairy. They're, they're tough on the funding of this kind of stuff, whether it's going to get done or not. I, I like, I hope that other scenario come, that it's coming out of Forest Service sooner than later, where we do travel management ourselves.
Our group's preference would be to leave the letter as it is, but with full understanding, um, and appreciation of your concern, I would suggest a complimentary letter that states specifically, expands your concern to, to secure rural schools, and maybe clarifies how you, how you would like to see travel management proceed.
It could get to be a big letter, uh, because it's, yeah, the secure rural school's a funding piece. Uh, when you start talking funding, who, who's our decision maker now at Forest? Who's our Forest Super? We do not have. Uh, there, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be, uh, staffed up appropriately. We keep having those guys come in here, I, I think Beaverhead County's been on record that building these relationships, we can't have a different one every two years. Because that's what the, the commitments they made, then Lisa had to retire about. You know, we're right on, back down the list of what knew it. Alan Watson, I don't know what happened to him, he was here for eighteen months and what. Now we got this Cory Llewellyn, which is acting, but he, he has no authority to make decisions on this stuff. There, there's a lot of stuff, and, and not that I'm against travel management, I think Beaverhead County's been in the forefront trying to get that done.
But I think, I think the reorganization will skip this. Every two years or less, the super leaves, because this is a satellite town, we're a satellite, we've changed our status, and, and it's almost Salt Lake, those big boys.
No matter what happens with reorganization and, and supervisors turning over, and, and I think you're right, Commissioner, we've been, you, but you've asked for this in the past, it's always been put off by the, for this reason, this reason, this reason. The difference now is, we have been building, 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 we are not the same collaborative group now that we were then. We have so much more horsepower, we have so much more attention, we have such a huge track record of success in working with counties. There is this window of chaos, and we are the voice- There is this window of chaos, and we are the voice coming up through that, saying, yes, your leadership is in disarray. If you're looking at what, how you should be managing things, we're telling you, here, the biggest national forest in Montana, all these counties on board, this is what the people on the ground need. That's what this letter is saying.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to adapt this?
I, like I said, I'd go with this, and accompany, you're the author on what you speak of. Company can send something in adjacent to this, even if it's a copy of what you wrote, went to the collaborative. You know, pack that letter back to the collaborative and pass it around. But they were in among all this for the last month, or two months, when we're drafting this out.
Oh, yeah, it's been a couple of months.
Couple of months, this, I wasn't there that one month, but anyway, this is strictly the on-the-ground kind of thing. It isn't the funding and pilts and SRS and all of those other, you know, that's, you know, so.
This is saying, local priorities matter, we need you to-
You know, and then the fact that we'd be the lone county. You know, we've been part of this for a while. Anyway, what do you mean, we suppose? Well, that's, we'd be the only one in the whole group that wouldn't approve this. Oh, all right, yeah, okay, that's, if I did hear that, you know, we're a little bit, so.
Anyway, so I guess I'll second it. Put it to a vote, all in favor, take a five by. Aye. All opposed?
Nope.
Okay.
So, we'll do that.
Most in period.
Most in period. Now, I urge you to draft up something that you want to send to the Congress, and I'll just take your letter back to the collaborative, just to see your back, our editor's thoughts.
I would say we're not focused on our collaborative's priorities. We are the venue where everyone who has a stake in the forest comes to the table and tells us what their concerns are. If Beaverhead County Commissioners are concerned about secure rural schools funding that impacts public land management, we are the place for you to come and help you voice that. So if you have specific concerns and you want to write a letter and you want us to support or somehow help move that forward, bring that to us, because I think there's other counties at our table who would agree and support you.
You know, I think too, that other counties would take that right at home too. You know, because some get fair much, we're fairly big SRS company. Powell's the same way. And then there are others that are-
Jefferson's fairly big too, I think we're over sixty percent or something.
Yeah, so, but anyway.
Thank you for the time, you've been typing a lot, I appreciate you hearing me out. And to each of you, this conversation is ongoing. Anytime, my phone is available anytime you want to talk about it, and we meet the first Wednesday of every month. Travel management is just about always on our agenda, but it's ongoing, we're just keeping the hammer going, so. Yeah, keep the talk going.
I'm sorry to rain on your parade, I just want to get that out, like, that's, sometimes, I don't know.
It's not rain, we all need rain, right?
Yeah.
What you said is important, it's important to Beaverhead County, I don't disregard it. I just feel this is a critical message to advance now, and I want to do everything I can to get that, to move that forward alongside your really important concerns. So with approval, then we may list Beaverhead County on this letter.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Call anytime with further questions.
Thank you, be careful, and you're way back.
Oh, it'll be good. Good luck with the rest of your, thanks again for your time, everyone.
Be best.
Thank you.